Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming in. First thing is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Joe. Second by Michaeline. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? This time we have a motion for public comment. Okay. No comment, okay. So, it's a new year. It starts our organizational meeting. And to start that off, we have the election of the officers. And first, order of duty is election of the chair. So, do we have any nominees for the chair?
Nominate Tom.
Do we have any other nominations of the chair? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do I have to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So, continue on the quest. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a done deal, but I wonder if sometime we should talk about whether we should be rotating offices, officers among the officers?
Uh huh.
I mean, I'm perfectly happy, I'm not unhappy. I just, we've talked about it from time to time in the past. And just to move things around, you know, have a progression, so it's...
Well, we think every two years or...
Well, I, I mean, you know, just to, like Gary's been in the vice chair, you know?
Couple of years and he could move up.
Well, I might not want to. I mean, I just...
No, I agree.
You know, I, I think we're good for this year. It's just, it's a conversation we need to have at some point. Maybe when we're doing strategic planning.
Planning, yeah.
I think Tom's really good at taking all those long phone calls.
Okay, we'll let him have it.
Okay. Thank you, Michaeline. Does anybody else have any other comments? So, the next position would be election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for a vice chair?
Nominate Gary.
Anybody else nomination for a vice chair? Anyone else? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor for Gary, vice chair?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Gary.
Thank you.
Good job.
Way to go.
Okay, resolution to combine the duties of the clerk and the treasurer in one person in the office. Our business affairs?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Introduce the resolution.
Motion to introduce the resolution. Second by Joe. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I should have discussed when you asked for discussion. I think this is a good idea that we do this annually. I know once we've done it, it's in place, like until you change it, but it's good to be reminded that we've done it, so thanks. Sure.
So, at this time, we have an election of the clerk.
Nominate Ron.
The nomination of Ron. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Ron?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, aye. Uh, treasurer.
Nominate Mimi.
Have a nomination of Mimi. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, we have a nomination of Mimi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Mimi. Ah, official nominations. Okay, depar. Okay, who do we have depository?
This is the one where last year we changed. We had both the Bremmer and the liquid asset fund. And we combined everything as to Bremmer Bank. And so now Bremmer is our one depository.
So, we just have to, a motion to approve that?
Uh huh.
So, move it. A motion by Gary. Have a second? Second. Second by Joe. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, calendar. 2017 calendar. Board meeting calendar. I know we had a few discussions on this. Changing it from Tuesday to Thursday nights.
And there's two possibilities. Uh, there's, the dates there are tentatively on Thursdays, and then we've also got the calendar for tentative Tuesdays. So, that way, whatever decision you make, the date's already there for you. So, that's what you need to decide. The, the motion would be to either move forward the Thursday dates or the Tuesday dates.
So, do we have anything I want to say on either or? I know we've, like I said, we've discussed that we're changing it last board meeting to Thursday?
I think there was general consensus, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
That's, that'll work for you.
Yeah, that's, that helps.
It helps.
Well, that, yeah, that really, that's definitely where everybody falls.
Okay.
Okay.
I think our interest was to have a full board as often as possible.
Okay.
Now, when we vote for this, we're not voting for these board committee, no, dates at all.
No, no, that's, that's, no.
Joe, Thursday is good for you. It's just as good as...
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the Thursday night board meetings at 6:00 P.M. Motion? Okay.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wire transfer authorization?
This designated the people who have the authority to sign for wire transfers.
We see on here we have printed when, if anybody's asking. I wonder if you did it last time. So, we have a motion to stays with those. Motion. Motion by Ron. Joe? Second.
Second.
Ron? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Official newspaper. It's gone with the banners since they've been established. Did we do that, if I remember?
Motion.
A motion to maintain. Okay, motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Michaeline. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, legal counsel.
Motion to approve Kennedy Grayman charging.
Motion by Michaeline.
Second.
Second by Joe. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent has identified official with authorities.
I wish they'd come up with a different acronym than Iowa, but that's... There's nothing wrong with Iowa, they're our neighbors.
Yeah, some of us.
And one shouldn't laugh about it.
It's true.
Okay, so we have a motion?
So moved.
Michaeline? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This, this is, this is for things like filing reports with the state, putting, making pins, being the liaison to all the official documentation, right?
Yep.
Just to clarify what that is.
Right, this is all MDE's granting authority to who has access to different things within the MDE site, yes.
Thank you.
May I have motion and second again? Did we do that yet?
Mike and, Mike and then Joe seconded it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Compensation.
Compensation of Board of Education members. Okay, this is, we, this hasn't changed in a while. Does anybody have any thoughts with maintaining? Move to approve. Second. Second by Ron. Discussion?
Um, I just wondered, I know we're going to be approving fourth quarter board pay tonight under new business. Can that, since we are approving this at this level, can it just be a consent item?
Oh.
I mean, in the future?
Sure, in the future.
I mean, and then if, if we need to set it aside, since we've already established, it's not like we're...
Changing it?
Changing anything. We always put it under new, I just thought, isn't that a consent? I don't know if it is or isn't.
And I will check on that to make sure that, but if, if it is something that can just be a consent item, it makes sense to move it to that.
I mean, we do that for hiring, hiring contracts and so forth, so.
Is that a consent item at one time in the past?
I don't...
I don't remember. Seems like we changed it to, when there were some questions, but if it's possible, that's a good idea. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee appointments. Facility committees. These are the fun ones, come on, people. Facility committee, okay, Gary and I have...
And one thing, you, you may have up to three, but then we need to designate who is going to be the, kind of the, the main person for that committee to chair it.
So, it's my, so when we appoint or name these committees, I mean, it's the board chair's prerogative to appoint or name people to the committee. We don't have to have motion and second, right? We're not voting on these, right? My other question, or another question is, is meet and confer an official board committee or is it a representation? Because we don't post those meetings, I don't think. Or do we post them?
It's a, the meet and confer is a contractual requirement since it is defined within the master agreement.
But it's more of a board representation situation than it is a committee of the board?
You're right.
So, we should move it down?
Because committees of the board have to be posted. I mean, not that meet and confer isn't known or it's not hidden, but...
But meet and confer is not something that we open to the public. You're absolutely right. But it, and I, I left it on here because it's always been listed as one of the committees.
I know, I guess, because I was looking this over, so I guess that's why I'm asking.
Yep.
So, we move that down to the board representations?
And I have a, a couple of questions about committees. The first one is whoever we assign as the main person of the committee, are they the ones that set the schedule?
Yeah.
Oh, is that the schedule or the, the agenda?
Schedule.
When we talk of schedule, that's kind of your point of contact.
So, for instance...
They can call meetings.
Yeah, for instance, in the past, in the online school, I've set the schedule and we typically meet six to seven times, but on the calendar that's been proposed, we meet three times. And it's not really enough. So, you know, I would assume that whoever the main person is would then take the schedule that you did and take it from there, right? I assume that that was all the days that were available of board meetings. So, they would have to meet outside of the five o'clock line.
Yes. That you'd have to make sure that we couldn't have different people scheduling things on the same time, because we have to make sure that all the schedules fit together.
Right.
So, that's, if you're going to, if you want to schedule, it's got to get into the, the calendar, so it doesn't...
We just got to coordinate with everybody.
Right.
One, everybody on the committee neighborhood is involved in the process, which we haven't had any issues in the past, so I think you're right. I mean, we need to have more than three. We've had more than three in the past. It's just, I think what, the calendar you put out correctly, if I'm wrong, was just a tentative?
It's just a tentative, just to make sure that the, there are some meetings scheduled and...
Because of negotiations, I mean, they're all over the board.
Right.
I mean, online, if we have stuff that comes up and we have to have a meeting, we set it up and, so...
But I also don't want to have a, a meeting, what's there something to meet about?
And I don't think we've done that in the past. I think we've kind of tried to avoid that.
And the other question I have, and I sent an email about this too, I'll just bring it up now, is with the committee meetings, we've been just giving an update at the end of the board meeting, and I would rather see us have a formal section towards the beginning, because I feel like the reports from those committee meetings are important and they might be a report that I, I need the information in order to vote on something. I'd, I'd like to see the information flow back and include it more at the beginning of the meeting before we have discussion about their...
Like we did with policies last time, where the policy committee had part of the discussion and the committee talked in the discussion part.
Right, but it might be a discussion about, if the, if the policy committee met and they have a report given at the beginning, because it might come into context on something completely different than policy. You know what I mean? Instead of doing it at the end. It, it just makes more sense to me to do it at the beginning.
Have it as a discussion topic, so if the committee has met?
Yep.
So, let's say the finance committee meets, then, if finance committee meets prior to a board meeting that night or even a week prior, then finance committee knows that the person who's listed as contact person knows that he or she will need to do some type of presentation.
Right, and they might talk about three or four things, and two of them might be on the board agenda and two might not. But then everybody has that context and can talk about it before we get to those items for discussion.
Yeah, it could just be listed as a discussion item.
Yep.
And if there is something to present or if, either way, whether it's just we met and we, we have to meet again or whether there is something to report.
Right.
So, not at the very beginning, but in the discussion, I think it should go in the discussion.
Right, I mean, I don't mean before the, yeah, I mean, I don't mean before the consent items, but not the very last item of, because I feel like we've probably already covered everything, but by the time we get down there, there's nothing more to report.
So, move the committee updates up to the discussion item.
Right.
Correct, okay. Does anybody have a problem with that? We'll just start doing that from now on.
Thank you.
What we talked about. Okay, so, let's continue on with the, you, you good, Mimi, on that?
Yep, buddy.
Facilities committee?
Notice we have Kevin on there, so Kevin would have to be, no.
No, no, the facilities.
No, on, on, but yes.
As we get to our, our place.
Okay, you're going one by one.
Right, correct. We'll start off with facilities, just to see if anybody else wants to jump on. I know Gary and I enjoyed our time together.
We had a fun year.
Yeah, we have had an exciting year.
You're not everything, so you're just going to be...
What are you laughing at? Yeah, yeah. Well, we're hoping for a quieter year, right, Gary?
What's that?
We're hoping for a quieter year, right?
Yeah.
We already got a few things on the table, so... Does anybody else want to be part of that one? Otherwise, I'm, I enjoy it. You good with that? Okay, negotiations, that's the one everybody wants to be on.
Josh, you want to take my place on that?
I'll, I'll say this, I would be happy to do my fair share. I realize I'm new and get my feet wet. And I see Kevin's spot. That would probably not be my strong suit, but if there's another spot that I could help out in or take someone's spot to free up some, I'm open to...
What interest you, what, what's?
Well, I am pretty green, so I'm open to any suggestion and, you know?
Part of the situation, the policy, the committee meetings usually meet the hour prior to the regular board meetings.
I guess I would ask the board, is there one that you feel like you could need another person on, another, and I would be happy to...
And again, you know, when...
And after this year, I'll weigh in next year.
With the committees, you know, you, you know, and that's fine, you don't have to jump in.
What I mean, I'm happy to take your suggestion on it where needed, and then after the experience, then I'll relay my thoughts when we do this next year.
Well, you said that online schools wouldn't be a good, I think it would be a great fit for you, honestly, because then you...
I would be...
That's the one where Kevin was at.
And Kevin was on there on the online school committee.
I missed that. I was looking at the legislative liaison, so, you know? That worked well.
I think, you know, I think we'd love to have you in online school, and, and then you would get to know, it would be some extra education on the online school that maybe we don't get during a board meeting, so I think it would be good for you.
I don't want to trump you either, but I am interested in being on the online schools committee as well, so the board's going to have to pick.
Is there something that you'd want to be freed up from that I could take your spot on that or something that you're...
Don't say that.
I want to be as much help as possible.
We need to be nice to him, guys.
Yeah. I'm going to learn, I'll learn and regret probably, but no, I do want to do my fair share, even though I'm new, so...
Well, Michaeline, I mean, I advise to all family on the school committee.
No, I think that...
I mean, I'd like to be on it, just because it's a big part of our school.
Well, anybody who's on the board can participate and should ask questions, and committees cannot... The board makes the decisions, right? So, I'm fine. We should do online schools.
Okay.
It will grill you.
But as you remember, though, as new, you can go to any of the meetings, you know, if you want to come in and just get a feel of what's going on in them.
Sure.
To kind of, like you said, get your feet wet this year, get and understand any questions that may come up. And then, you know, later on next year, you may want to be part of them.
Sounds good.
So, keep that in mind. So, as of right now, it's, we'll go back to our favorite one, negotiations, are we keeping the same team?
It's a heavy year this year. The following contracts are getting negotiated, the teachers, the supervisory confidential, the professional, the principals.
Okay, so, Ron, you're up for that battle, correct?
Yeah, unless you think that the teachers and all would like to see a whole new team out there.
I enjoy it.
I should have joined.
Is your next one, are you right? I better enjoy it, too. Okay, we'll just keep the same team on that. And then the online, it'll be, will I have a new addition to call Kevin?
No, no, Josh, you can do that one. No.
Josh will be part of that. And then, so, should we designate people like on the negotiation?
Please designate the contact at the same time.
You can put me down for negotiations, and I know in the past, it's been Mimi for the online. I think that's fine.
Facilities, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gary? And with that being said, when we're discussing this, who's kind of the point person on this? If you want to set up something, a requirement, like a meeting or whatever, that would be the point person to go to with, like Ann. So, like Gary wants to set up a facility meeting, because, you know, we're discussing it, and somebody else on the board has, wants to know what's going on, they go through Gary.
And so, if Gary wants to set up a meeting, he would call me.
Correct.
And we'd work it out as far as where it fits in the calendar.
Same way, like with the online negotiations, so on and so forth. So, finance?
Doesn't have to be me to...
Well, you're the treasurer, you ought to be on it.
Yeah, you got to be on it.
Well, I'll be on it, but I mean, I don't have to be the...
Point person.
Well, since you're treasurer, do you think Joe should be the point person for finance then? So, you're sharing the wealth?
It's fine, go on. Good.
Policy? I like the way the policy team we have is a phenomenal team.
It's amazing.
They do an excellent job.
Nobody is good.
It's fine, we'll understand.
And we appreciate that, Michaeline.
And Ron.
And Ron.
And I appreciate that, Michaeline.
You make Ron look really good, Michaeline. Okay, and we'll have Michaeline as a point person?
Yep.
Meet and confer, again, that's Ron and Michaeline.
That's going under board representation.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But is that fine that we, that we stay?
Yep.
Okay.
So, then, legislation, he's on, it was Kevin.
Who's that all involved? Which?
Hasn't been much.
Hasn't been much, for a list.
He went up to the city's dinner a couple of times or...
There's a, a day at the Capitol.
Yep.
And the legislative breakfast is on February 4th. Is that, yes. And I found out I cannot attend the legislative breakfast. I will be judging a one-act competition.
Are we bringing up anything or representing, or is it more or less a meet and greet, or what is...
Usually when you go, you have, Kevin always got his own kind of slate of topics, but I get a slate of topics that I could give to you two to talk about, as far as those things that you want to talk to your legislator about.
It'll be questions, concerns, I mean, maybe kind of, for you, I, for someone new, Kevin was a little...
Kevin knew his way around the Capitol.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Go up and see the hired help. Yeah.
I'm usually not free to...
Yeah, I'm not, it's kind of, anybody else?
And it's usually during the week, yeah.
It's tough.
I know a retired guy that maybe did it that long.
I couldn't think of anything I'd like to do last.
Well, I think somebody's, oh, it seems to me that somebody's always named as the days, whether they actually have to go to anything, or if there's something that we collectively as a board want to put forward to our representatives, then you would be the person, or the...
I would be happy to do that, and I could introduce myself as a first-time board member, and, you know, I would not misrepresent myself in any way and go from there. But I could definitely be a...
So, you're willing to?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to take his spot.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ron is jumping a bit. Houston Coney Collaborative, Michaeline?
Yep.
Men of Wellington, part of that again.
I think we're still going to be meeting, it's, it's, it needs a little more organization.
Okay, MSHSL, Joe?
That's fine. That's a busy one for you, is it?
Community Ed. I don't know if you'd be part of that, I mean, I'm all right, that's fine.
Can I ask a question about this? We have the preschool task force now?
That's actually the community advisory council, is because preschool is through community ed.
So, they know that they're the preschool task...
I wouldn't mind being a part of that then, Tom? And we can have two.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, what, which whole community?
Community Ed.
Could you add Mimi? Yes. Thank you.
And I've actually been on there as a community representative, senior citizen.
Well, you're a citizen.
Senior citizen.
Yeah. Okay, ECFE Advisory Council, who's on?
It's me, but I can honestly say I don't know that we've ever met, so, you could It's me, but I can honestly say I don't know that we've ever met, so you could take that one if you wanted, Josh. I mean, I, I don't know why do we have to just write somebody down? I mean, we have to have somebody in that slot or is, I don't know.
I shouldn't have the answer to that, I am not sure.
You can keep me down and just, they never meet. Or I'm never invited, I don't know. I, you know what, take that back. A year ago, there was something.
Yep, and I think it's, it's...
I don't know if it was community ed or ECFE, I think.
For the four-star parent aware, I think they have to have the council and I think they do have to meet at least annually, so.
Yep, maybe they, yeah.
So you wanna stay on that committee?
I can take one more maybe if you and then...
I, I'm a little confused when we talk about the ECFE and that being for the four-star because that's the preschool. So it's kinda confusing what the difference is between those, but yeah, why don't we put Josh down? He could have that one.
Okay, Josh.
Maybe he'll get it all figured out.
Can you come back and report to us?
Happy to.
Okay, District Advisory.
I would like to continue on that.
This is the one that writes the world's best workforce script.
And staff development.
Yes, that is it.
You wanna maintain on that one or some?
If somebody else even wants, I mean, I'm on there, I was curious about it, but I thought maybe they were doing more strategic things and...
Were doing statute mandated things?
Yeah. I mean, I can stay on and attend when I can if you...
If somebody else wants to be part of that? H Fed? This one Kevin had, and I talked to you about this, is one of the one on.
That's in Winona.
Yeah. And I talked to Kevin and he was up to help, you know, mentoring a little bit if you were interested unless somebody else wants to get on that board.
I'm, I'm not able to because of my work schedule this year. They meet on Wednesdays and I'm working Wednesday nights, so.
So it's a monthly?
It's a monthly and you don't get the, you don't get the Houston board pay because you get a, I think it's a hundred-dollar H Fed stipend.
Right. Is there someone else that would like to get on?
That was an evening then?
Yeah, it's like seven o'clock.
Yeah, the letter isn't included in the packet.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Yeah, if no one, no one else is, I'll take a spot on that and I work in Winona, so.
All right, that's...
I wonder, was his, how perfect attendance is?
He didn't miss a meeting?
Probably not. I will, I will...
There are some others that have issues getting there as well.
Yeah, I realize how important it is, so I would definitely...
It's a thirteen, or fourteen. I think there's thirteen members on the board. Cause every school district gets a representative.
All right.
Now, you know, that meeting, Chris, if he can't make it, I've asked his question, Kevin there, if someone else, if he, someone can't make it, can someone else from the board go or is that?
I can ask Jeff.
Can you ask that question, just? Michaeline?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that the person who's designated is the one who goes and either if you miss a board, it's like missing a board meeting here cause you're a voting member, so I don't know that you can...
All right.
Swap people off.
Swap people off.
You could go and probably listen and state Houston's position, but you would not be able to vote.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just, all of these things, we have found if we have to change things mid-year because of work schedule changes or whatever, we can revisit these committees, right?
Right.
Sure. If you try it and it's just not working out, you...
That sounds reasonable.
Toss it back and say...
Okay, and then I'll, I'll contact Kevin and catch up on...
And I know I talked to him before, he went to school and asked him.
And he was open?
He said, yeah, cause he's been really involved in it, has done a great job, you know, on it.
Sounds good.
Okay, continuing Ed, Gary? You on that one? MSBA, it was me, Brian, is there else? Q Comp, Mike?
Well, I've been confused with Q Comp, I emailed a couple times because the 2006 committees had Ron as Q Comp and we never got anything, and so I emailed, why are we never getting Q Comp updates? And you were unaware that you were supposed to be going to them?
Yeah, I wasn't too.
And I listed there, but I have the 2016 board appointments that has Ron as Q Comp, and so...
Because you couldn't do Wednesdays and they were meeting Wednesdays, except this year has been admittedly spotty as far as meetings with Nick Truxell's departure, where that left a hole.
I kept looking for the meetings, but...
I am very, I am interested in being on that, but I have a conflict with Wednesdays, so that's probably gonna be a conflict for Q Comp. Whether they're spotty or not, they usually meet on Wednesdays. So I'm not able to, but I have, that's one of my preferred meetings.
Do they have to meet on Wednesdays? Is there a reason for that or?
It was, it was selected Wednesdays because there were people that were coaches and Wednesdays tended to be a better day because they didn't have any leakings.
Are you always gonna be tied up on Wednesdays or?
I will be until May. So would you be on that?
Okay, so Ron?
Okay, Wellness, Ron, it was you?
Yep.
Technology Committee, Michaeline, you?
I would, I am interested in being part of that.
And just to clarify, this is the group that will set this technology strategy? And it was on the...
Tentative?
It had a meeting schedule as well, right?
Right. It, it, it was listed in that tentative because I, the district technology committee is defined within our district technology plan. So I tried to come up with a meeting schedule that adhered to what was put forth in that plan. And, and that's the same schedule that, same way I came up with the schedule for the district advisory committee.
Can you remind me where the tentative committee scheduled is?
It, it was at the end of it, it was a tentative Thursdays, tentative Tuesdays.
Oh, was that the end of the calendar thing?
Yep. I tried to keep all, all the calendar together.
Okay, I just didn't scroll down.
So the technol, this technology committee, no? Not a committee or it is?
Yes, so we're board representatives. It's not a board committee?
But it's gonna meet before the board meetings?
No, they, because it does not meet before, it meets after school because there are teachers on that, so it's a 3:30 meeting.
Okay, but it's always on the same day as a board meeting? Is that what the, I'm just wondering why this one calls out with a schedule? February 9th?
Yeah, that February 7th or 9th, prior to a board meeting. It, it doesn't have to be, it's just...
Something. You still wanna be part of it, correct me?
Yes. I would like us to meet sooner than later, but it looks like it's February, so I can wait that long.
It's coming around the corner.
But talking about not waiting long, I would like to get a strategic planning session now that we're, after the first of the year, we're waiting for this, so I'd like to get that on the schedule as well.
Kevin over there, Dan?
I don't know where to have...
What do you mean by that, put it on this?
I'd just like us to start talking about it and...
It could be a discussion item for the, the next board meeting because you guys haven't decided on what strategic planning you really want to do. We've gotten a lot of ideas, but there hasn't been consensus. So that's why nothing's been planned because we haven't reached a consensus.
I thought we were waiting until after the first of the year.
Yeah, and that's why we just tabled it until the first of the year.
So put on discussion for next board meeting?
Yep.
Anybody have anything else to discuss on the committees? Okay, so, we have a motion to approve consent items.
Motion.
Proved by two. Discussion?
I was just curious how, how many applicants you had for the long terms sub and for the MNVA office supervisor? Do you know?
Office supervisor, I know there were four interviews and more applicants than interviews. For the long terms sub for MNVA, there were at least two applicants. So we, we had people for whom to select.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Discussion items? Favorite part of the year here is the FY 2016 audit. Frank, I believe, has been patiently waiting. Roll that with us?
No problem.
Which, would you like me to hand out to them or neither one yet?
Um, you can do, or you can hand out both if you want, that's fine. This is the one I'll roll over with the charts and the graphs, so. So we got some pretty pictures to, truly had a set of more numbers, so. Yeah, we did complete the 2016 audit. Issued the statements, those are coming around here. Basically, the document that you have in front of you right now is what we call our executive audit summary, so the shorter of the two documents, and that's usually the one I, I talk about at board meetings. Basically, if you wanna follow along in the, in the document itself, I'm on page one. Basically, we issued a clean screening on the financial statements. We're comfortable with the numbers, we're comfortable with the disclosures, that they're presented in accordance with accounting principles. We look at internal controls over financial reporting, which is kind of looking at processes to produce the numbers. We had no findings there. We looked at Minnesota legal compliance, which is kind of a, it's a set of work programs that the state auditor's office publishes, states on an annual basis. And it's just some specific statutes and laws that they call out that they want us to test for compliance. And we did that, we had no findings. With the student activity funds, there's a separate set of compliance requirements for those as well. We had no findings on compliance in regards to student activity funds. So basically, we've got a clean, a clean report of the numbers and no findings. So very, very good odds, very good results. Flip over to page four, and in the middle of the page, we talked about if we have any adjusting entries or quote-unquote uncorrected misstatements. We did not, so, and any of the adjustments, which were very few, they were fairly insignificant. So that's what we refer to under a heading called corrected misstatements. So the numbers and financial results should look very familiar to, to information you've already seen previously. If we flip over to about page 11 is the start of the charts and graphs. So what we'll start with is the general fund, that's at the top of page 11. And the general fund, this is where we spend a lot of time looking at the general fund. It's the main operating fund of the district, so it's the fund that basically finances most of the education other than community ed that occurs here in the district. In total, revenues for the general fund came in at $20.9 million. Expenses came in at about $20.8. So, top line revenues were a little bit less than last year. There's a little bit of decrease in enrollment on the online portion of the school. But with the online program, when revenues fluctuate up or down, expenses usually fluctuate up or down very close and kind of in sync with that. So at the end of the day, it really doesn't have much of an impact on your fund balance. So in net, at the end of the day, revenues exceeded expenses by about $111,000, which added to fund balance. So regardless of the enrollment going up or down, we added about the same amount to fund balance in total for the general fund as in previous years. So very consistent kind of bottom line performance there.
How would that be different if online enrollment moving together? How would that be different with the local enrollment?
Well, local enrollment going up or down, you're not passing through as much money to a vendor or a provider, right? Like K-12 Inc. So revenues, enrollment going up or down more on your K-12 or your brick and mortar students is gonna impact your revenues, particularly state aid, because you get about $6,000 in state aid per student. But with that, you don't necessarily have your payroll costs going up or down. So you're not tending to flux, you know, your salary cost to your faculty directly with, you know, your student numbers going up or down necessarily. So you don't see that kind of, you know, that direct kind of correlation there. So what we'll do, kind of going on the next slide is, we'll, we'll start kind of a series of kind of snapshots of fund balance. So where do you stand financial position wise for fund balance at the end of the day? So what we're looking at here is, again, the general fund, but the unrestricted portion of fund balance. So, you know, with your funding that you get from the state, there's restrictions and stipulations about what it's used for, how it gets used. Any residual comes in, goes into a restricted portion of fund balance. The unrestricted portion that we're looking at here is what you kind of have discretion over. Discretion over how you spend it, if you spend it, what you use it for. This is kind of where your financial health comes from, from the district standpoint. It's not the restricted portion, it's the unrestricted portion. So this is where you see a lot of the addition that we talked about, a good chunk went, the increase in fund balance, that $111,000, about half of it went into unrestricted. Your unrestricted fund balance came in at about 8.3% of general fund expenditures. And kind of your board policy, the target that you have set for yourselves for a minimum is five, 5%. So, so you're, equates to about four and a half weeks of expenditures. So that's also kind of consistent with state guidelines. The state likes to see anywhere from 8% as a minimum to 16% of fund expenditures in unrestricted fund balance. So good results there. This is a slice of restricted fund balance and this is basically non-capital related. So what that, what goes into here, into this particular tranche is staff development, area learning center, and gifted and talented. Had a little bit of a decrease from 2015 because you used some of your safe schools funding, fund balance carry forward from last year. So still it came in at $378,000 at the end of 2016. Next one is operating capital, fund balance, and this one's, you know, there's restrictions on it, but it's a little bit less restrictive than some of the other categories. So, you know, you can use this to purchase like your Chromebooks and some leasing leases you can charge to that. Gives you a little bit more flexibility, about $541,000 at the end of 2016. Kind of, you know, you see a couple areas, like with the building project, you had the big building project. You used a little bit less here through your general fund because you had a lot of deferred maintenance and kind of efficiency things being taken care of with your large project that you bonded for. Next slide is health and safety fund balance. And I'll preface this one as well as the next slide, which is deferred maintenance because the health and safety and the deferred maintenance got repackaged into the long-term facilities maintenance, which was effective July 1st. So these two as a separate category are gonna get merged into one. Basically, the health and safety, what we saw there, it was in a negative. And the reason for that is you had some safety projects that you did back in 2014 and 15 that are now, where you incurred the costs are now getting caught up with tax levy dollars coming in, which they always trailed one to two years. So absent, you know, additional spending here, you'd see this kind of go back to zero. But the next category where it kind of gets bumbled in together with this deferred maintenance, the types of projects that you can do through long-term facilities maintenance is basically unchanged from, you know, the, what you saw in health and safety or deferred maintenance. But it does dovetail into your 10-year capital plan that you, the board approved some months ago. The change from 14 kind of to 15 and holding steady at $280,000, this was some handicapped accessibility projects that you did at the high school. Okay, food service? Okay, food service. Food service is contracted through Tachar, has been for a while now. And a couple of things for 2016, you ended with a positive fund balance of $9,100. Now, there's a required or kind of a mandatory 10 cent increase in the price of meals, so that's pretty normal. And then also, your participation in the breakfast program was significantly higher than it was last year. So, you had more participation in the meal program in general. So, that did add to your bottom line. The community service fund balance is holding steady at $25,000. Your community service program broke even, so the revenues covered the, covered the costs almost spot on. So, again, about a $5 net income at the end of the year. So, so it's good to see those, you know, the community service programs kind of self-supporting. That's kind of the intent, that's what you want to see. The debt service fund balance, let's see, where did I jump to? Oh, capital projects. So, this one is, this is not general fund, this is capital projects fund balance. This is basically the unspent proceeds from the bond issue, the facilities maintenance bond. That's a good participation that you issued a year ago.
I don't think that slide is in your.
Yeah, I don't think it's in your packet, so. But it is in our slide deck here, so that's what that represents. And, you know, as you complete the project, you'll see that go down as expected. But that's what it's for. The debt service fund is, that's just basically, is coming down mainly because of your 2009 bonds. You're just getting those paid off a little bit more and more each year. Now, the debt service on the bonds that you issued a year ago, that hasn't kicked in yet. That, those debt service payments kicked in in 2016, '17, the year that we're in right now. So, and those are going to be funded through kind of a portion of that long-term facilities maintenance levy dollars that are coming in there. So, you've got kind of a already restricted, kind of designated source of funding for most of that additional debt service payment, because we have, starting in the next fiscal year. Okay, so general fund revenue, this is just kind of a graphic of the sources of funding for the general fund. Where does it come from? It's largely dependent on state aid or state sources. Property taxes are about 4.7%. State sources about 89%. Included in state sources revenue this year was a contribution that the state made to the Teachers Retirement Association Pension Plan on your behalf. And that was about $180,000. And because of the accounting requirements, we have to kind of record that as a flow-through. So, we record a revenue of, for that $180,000, and we record an expense for that $180,000. Doesn't have any net impact on the bottom line, but it is enough to, you know, move this percentage, you know, percentage point or two. It's $180,000 this year, a year ago it was only $20,000. So, that's why I just kind of point that out to you. And it'll show up in when we look at expenses here in a few slides as well, you can see that. So, okay. Student counts, this is kind of the weighted student counts of both the local as well as the online programs. Your local student count and population has been pretty steady over the years. You had a little bit of a decrease, about a 5% decrease in the online enrollment. But what we'll do now is we'll kind of take these numbers, these student counts, and we're going to use these to divide out or calculate expenses on a per student basis for the next series of slides. So, think of it as we're going to lift expense numbers right off of your financial statements and divide by those student counts. So, vocational is, vocational instruction is industrial tech and business. That one is holding pretty steady now that comparisons here like 2012 through '16 are going to be Houston. The bar here is benchmark from MDE of all districts in the state who have a student population of anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 students. So, the benchmarks are, are basically going to, in a way, include those online student counts, what we're comparing to. And then the far-right bar is the entire, all districts in the state, statewide average. So, vocational goes up and down, sometimes depending on the licensing of your teacher. So, you had a licensed industrial tech teacher in 2015, so you can code those costs, salary and benefit costs here. So, anyway, $17, or $79 per student. Their special education, running through H-VEN, and it's, some of these, he had more site services purchased through H-VEN in 2016. So, a little bit higher cost. Special education's kind of a tough one to really kind of control because it's entirely dependent on the needs of the students in the program. So, higher need students are, you know, higher cost, lesser need students are lesser cost. Instructional support services, this is going to be things like library, media center, curriculum, staff development, teacher development. You did use some staff development dollars in 2016. That's also kind of the, the jump back here from '13 to '14 is just putting those, kind of those restricted resources to work. Also in '13, or '14, excuse me, there is a coding change on your instructional tech teachers. So, pupil support services, this is going to be counseling and kind of health-related, school nurse, those types of costs. And this one really is more of a factor of, you know, the enrollment number going down. You're dividing basically a similar set of amount of cost or a smaller student number. So, $318 per student. Next one we have is sites and buildings. This is kind of what I refer to as your occupancy cost. So, there's, this is in the general fund again, but it covers items like repairs and maintenance and utilities and things like that. Utility costs were a little bit lower in 2016, it was a better year that way. You know, so it comes in at $240 per student basis. And, you know, some of these areas with your, with your online program, and those online students aren't, they're not in brick and mortar buildings, they're not part of or utilizing or creating any costs under sites and buildings, for example. So, you see kind of those big differences between the statewide average and what the actual is. Food service, kind of the same thing happening there. The online students are at home, so they're not in the food, child nutrition program. $118 cost per student, but again, that was covered by revenues within the food program. So, that added about, that's $9,100 to the fund balance in this food service fund. Next one we have is transportation. Same thing, you know, online students are, they don't need the transportation. So, you know, compared to the benchmarks, you see that big difference there, but otherwise holding fairly steady, $141 per student. Community service, again, that community service programs broke even. Revenues covered the cost, $83 per student. This is capital expenditures within the general fund. This is not, this does not include the building projects. So, all those costs, again, with the bonded projects, those are in a different fund entirely, they're not even in the general fund. Couple things, again, kind of what we saw with, oh, like health and safety and deferred maintenance, with bigger project going on, there's less kind of capital expenditure occurring through the general fund. So, you kind of see the decrease here. 2015 was a little bit higher because you purchased a bus. And then district and school administration and support services, this is basically business office.
This is back on page 16.
Yep. Drunk around a little bit on this here. This is, in 2016, this is, you'll see a little bit of an effect from the TRA contribution. But if the next one, if we have regular instruction, that's where it really kind of jumps out. But here, this is regular instruction, cost per student. Now, this includes the online as well as the, in the local students. So, $6,900 per student. Regular instruction is where most of your classroom learning occurs. It's the largest line item in your budget, at about $14 million. And you can see like from 2015 to '16, it's a little bit higher, about $60 higher. And here is where you see most of that TRA, the state portion of the TRA contribution coming through as an expense. So, this is kind of the expense side, we looked at the revenue side in the pie chart. But this is where most of that's going to go through, so.
Is that true for the previous years too?
No. So, in 2016, the state made a very large contribution on your behalf into the TRA plan. So, here it was about $180,000, back here in '15 was about $20,000. It still comes through as an expense, just because of, you know, the accounting requirements, how we have to record that.
So, when we look at the, the difference in the cost of regular instruction per weighted student average compared to the state, or compared to other districts of our size? So, we're spending more to educate our students?
Well, and this includes the online though, as well, so.
But I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to resolve. I understand the resolution in the other areas where we're way below because we don't have transportation and buildings, but.
It shows up higher here for that same reason.
But maybe the next slide, where you got the regular, the local and the online compared, that would be a better place to ask a question.
So, here we kind of break out what's online, so $7,100. And this is, has a lot to do with, you know, you're paying, you're contracting some services, right? To do the online program. So, honestly, you see kind of the same thing happening if you contract out all of your busing as well. So, districts who contract out bus services, you see that kind of the same scenario. So, local students. It is, yeah.
What are we, I mean, I would assume that this would be teacher salaries, what are we.
This is the curriculum.
This is the curriculum.
Curriculum is part of regular instruction?
Oh, sure, because we have to, we have to pay for the online learning system, we have to pay for the total view system. We have to paying for the access to all of that curriculum. That's our regular instruction cost for that whole school.
Debt service, up until this point, you know, your debt service was very low, very, until 2016. The last bond you issued was issued in 2009. So, here you'll see, now this bar is going to be higher when you look at next year, going to 2017, because the debt service payments, those kick in on those 2016 bonds in the next fiscal year. And then building construction, this is going to be through your capital projects fund. So, this again is, this is the, the building project, the bond-funded portion of construction that you did this year. So, this one will go up or down depending on whether you have a project or whether you don't have a project, you know. So, this is, you know, this graph is going to be entirely specific on what's happening in your district. So, whether you spent more than other districts of similar size, it's not really meaningful comparison. That's what I have.
Anybody have any questions?
No, you know, when we see the trends over time, I understand, but we've asked before, you know, can we somehow within, break out the local costs from the online costs to see if our local costs are in line with the state on some of those things? I mean, that's what we can't really do in this, but.
Right, yeah.
Well, like transportation would be a good one, and then to actually take it and judge it based on other schools our size. You know, looking at the numbers that are there, don't have any.
I mean, in terms of strategic planning and budgeting, that's kind of good to know.
If our costs are double how the other schools are size, you know, for that particular thing, then we would, you know, flags like that would be useful.
But something else Kurt said that we should take into account is, he said, contracting, oh, your bus services. So, you're hiring a bus service to do it instead of doing it in-house. That's where you have extra costs because it's almost, it's.
Yeah, I mean, the benchmarks, there's a different, kind of a subset of benchmarks, you know, you could, you could, there's a, benchmarks for, you know, I think 0 to 500 students, if you wanted to kind of look at more on a local, local compared to others. But like, for example, on the transportation, you know, your comparisons are going to be a blend of districts who own their fleet versus districts who contract out all their bus service. So, you know, the benchmarks are exactly that, I mean, it's just kind of gives you that.
Are those benchmarks available at MDE, like could we go find them?
They are, yep.
And would it be broken, can you break it down even more than that? Pick ones that don't contract and ones that do?
No, I don't think so.
You can't really down.
You can go into like a school district of 500 to 1,000 or something and see where they're at.
You can go into the ones around us. Lanesboro has their own Rushford contracts, Caledonia contracts, Spring Grove contracts, Naval contracts.
Yeah. What you'll see though, then usually what you see like, then on the sites and the buildings chart, you'll see that kind of trend the opposite direction of what your transportation is. Because if you don't own your fleet, you're not having to maintain. You don't have the repairs and the maintenance expense. So, you know, usually they'll kind of, they're kind of counterpoint to each other.
I know, I know you've looked at that in the past. It seems like years ago we looked at, do we, because I thought we had, somebody contacted us from a place and said, hey, we can do it for you. And we kind of went back and forth, when am I saying that correctly, that discussing, is it worth having our own buses or not? As far as one of those things, so.
And I wasn't suggesting anything, I was using.
No, 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 no.
But I think the question is, how easy is it for us to get these numbers by just the local school?
Yeah, is that for?
Yeah, we, I mean, I know, it seems like the one was broken out, but the rest of them aren't. And, you know, if we could get district and school administration or, you know, some of them, transportation, if we can just get our local number, or maybe it's all local, I don't know, I don't know what's all these numbers.
I think we have access to that information, it's just we have to pull it on our own. For this purpose, obviously, we can't.
Finance committee, get on there.
Right.
Yeah, it takes a little bit more legwork to.
Being able to navigate MDE's website and not have it crash.
So, basically, the good thing is we're, we did okay.
You did okay, yep, exactly. You added about the same amount to fund balance as you did a year prior. And you made your, met your financial benchmarks or goals that you set for yourself. And also, kind of with that 8% fund balance to expenditure ratio, you know, you met the minimum benchmark that the state expects us to see too.
Is that where most schools are at this year? I mean, I know in the past we made that discussion, and some schools are like, ah, you know.
Yeah, there will be several schools around the 8%, there's some that are below, there's some that are, you know, a few that are significantly above.
If we, our number is divided by a bigger number because of the online school. So, if you were to not include that in the number, it would be a completely, much larger percentage, yes, so.
This is our expenses.
And to have absolutely no findings from MDE, is that, how common is that?
That's very uncommon.
I would like everybody publicly to know how uncommon that is, that there are no findings from MDE, and it's, we've got a director of finance who does an absolutely phenomenal job, and so I would like to make sure that she is, gives the commendation that she so richly deserves. Thanks.
Good job, everyone.
That said, there is one, the student activity account, that's always on here, always, is there ever a resolution to that?
Oh, that one's on the, for the revenue reporting.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's not an MDE thing, it's just something that's always a corrective action, there's always in place for that, and we're always working on this.
And that one is, that's a tough one to craft, because your intake, you know, isn't centralized like it is in the business office, it's happening out wherever, right, so.
We're trying to get it centralized to just the district office, so that we're sure that we don't have money sitting out in classrooms or with teachers, and so that it comes into the district office, so we're, we're working on that.
Yeah, but it's, it's a small, it's a small piece, so, you know, kind of the cost benefit is, you know, I'd rather pay attention to the big chunk over here, that's the one I'd be worried about, yeah, so.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And the bill looks a little different than it did this summer, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does, it's a little quieter, take a.
Your entire report, so we've got a great evening reading.
We'll have a break on that next week. Okay, moving right along, budget process and possible additions to staff.
I'm just letting you know that once again, and with the tentative online enrollments, we will probably need to go into tenured staff again. And last year, one tenured staff that was, who was placed on, on requested leave, has not been called back, so.
So, I know, so I'll make a motion that we.
Well, no, this is just discussion, I'm letting you know because it's going to come on to action for the next board meeting, and I didn't want to pop it on for action without having some conversation first.
So, so can, okay, so my conversation or my question would be, are we doing, or is there anything more we can do to try and market and reach out for enrollments, appropriate enrollments that we can handle, to, you know, hopefully not have that have to happen?
On Tuesday, I received a marketing push for the rest of the year, as far as where they're going for radio, for TV, for, there are going to continually be online fans, and so they're looking at where, where they're pulling in the most kids, and so they're honing in on those areas now, more specifically. And Kathy, who is Jen Houghton's replacement, Kathy Chabot, is, is working to try to have different activities or events, as well as those, the media push.
Is there anything that we can do in terms of, I know we do not have staff sitting around with nothing to do, but a social media presence, our own push, just from Houston Public Schools, from a social media perspective?
There are those of us that have talked about getting some type of parent advisory committee, and I think that, that would be a perfect thing for that, the parent group to talk about as far as, how do we spread the word?
I mean, there are school districts that have their own Facebook pages through appropriate channel, professional channels.
Oh, and we do, MNBA has that.
But I'm talking about just the whole school district, even local, and, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think outside the box about how to do outreach, and that we can control, not that we have to, you know, wait for somebody else to do for us. Maybe we can learn some at the meeting next week.
I guess Facebook is really.
Well, I don't know, there's all sorts of, there's all sorts of outreach.
Michael needs to come, we can't, can't sit back and just take, decrease everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do what we can do, it can take a lot of time though, and we don't have, it takes time, which takes personnel.
Well, I think it's twofold, in that we don't just want a body, we want the right student as well, and so there's been a conscious effort, and I think we should have a, I don't know if we do it in the online committee or if we do it as a board, but, you know, maybe there's some things we can do, like, if we know we have the right student, retaining that student, you know, and making sure we keep them, because we lose so many kids every year. So, I think there's some things we can do, but I, I think there's the net, I think it's almost, I don't want to say too much, but I, I don't think it's shocking to see it go down, because I think they're really trying to get the right kids, as opposed to just, you know, if it's not best for the kid.
I'm talking about not just online, I'm talking about locally too. I see coming home, you see buses going cross lines all the time around here.
Well, what's interesting is, we didn't get to see the enrollments for the local, but I thought it was up this year, quite a bit.
Yeah, we.
It was kind of all looped together, lumped together, and it looked like it was down, but I think, I mean, yes, we can always improve, and we can have preschool programs that could bring kids in, but, I mean, I think it's all stuff we need to talk about. But online, I, you know, there's, we want to get the, it's not necessarily the numbers, but it's the right kids.
I absolutely agree.
And I think by doing the social media thing, a lot of times you, people that have, those that, you know, associate with the similar people, and I, I know even local, if we use, when I talk about our school, and I'm sure we all talk the same way about how great we have it, and how good it is here compared to other schools, and even on social media, if you will, you know, that, that would be a way of boosting it.
Just to get people to ask the question.
Yeah, have you looked at, you know, type of thing, just.
It's an invitation.
Yeah, to a question, have you looked at what Houston is doing? Because I've had people that talk to me, and I'm sure everyone here has, that said, man, I've heard a lot of good things about what's going on in Houston. Well, have you heard about them, have you ever thought about being part of it?
And how did you hear about it?
And how did, yeah, exactly. And a lot of it is just word of mouth. But you put that question to them in social media, you've heard a lot about Houston, have you looked into being part of that excitement, whether it be on our online program or our local school, because like Michael needs to, I know, when you go from here to La Crosse, you pass almost three different schools, districts doing this, you know, and it'd be nice if it was just our buses. But, so, and it may be something we talk about in online, or. Okay, anything else? Okay, old business, doesn't look like we have any. New business, item for discussion and approval, fourth quarter board pay, we talked about that a little earlier, so that would be changed, but at this time it's on here, so we have a motion to approve the.
Motion.
Motion made by Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary.
Did everybody check that to make sure it was accurate?
I did, I checked mine, okay. Everybody check his or her?
My phone checks off first, just joking. So, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Policies for first reading, again, this is first reading, so, is there anything that we, you need to point out? Michaeline, we should.
You're all responsible for reading these policies, that's what I'd like to point out. I would also like to thank Kurt for organizing such a, a nice three-year cycle, it's nice to know that we are revisiting the policies on a routine basis.
Yeah, Kurt, just getting to the end of that cycle and.
Start over. Okay, do we have any questions on that? Announcements. Point events, MSBA's coming up, just around the corner.
Michaeline and Ron, are we all going to Kalakka on early Thursday morning?
Yes.
Okay.
What time are we pushing off, and from where?
Do you want to meet here, and if we need to be there by eight-thirty, leave at six? Okay?
Sounds good.
No, it doesn't, but.
What time is the first session?
Eight-thirty or nine? Eight-thirty, if you want to do a session prior to, and then the other session starts at nine. The main, starts at nine with entertainment, schools orchestras.
I'm going as well, so.
Yes, oh, but you are not riding with us, but.
I, maybe we can coordinate after the meeting, I don't know.
Okay, okay, but if you want to ride with us, you certainly.
Well, it depends when you're leaving and when you're going back and all that good stuff, but yeah.
We're leaving at six AM on Thursday.
Yeah, Friday at.
Right after.
Noon, yeah. That's what we've typically done.
Yeah, right after the presentation. Okay, you guys can fight that out. Breakfast on the fourth of February.
And since I can no longer attend, but that, if somebody else is going to, they should register for that. Greg Davids, it's at the MSBA Co-op Unit. Right now Jeremy Miller said he will be attending, Greg Davids is not attending.
Surprise.
I haven't seen Greg Davids attend yet.
I may be able to attend, I will now, can, will they take registering, is there a deadline for registering? Do you know?
I haven't seen anything as a deadline, but if they've got to make the breakfast and set up the tables, they usually like to know.
Want RSVP.
Yeah, they want RSVP.
I'll let you know if I'm able to go, as soon as I know for sure.
Okay.
Okay, may, anything else on that? Meeting and committee updates?
So, just to let you know, on policy committee, with the policy we're working on, we'll probably have, try to have a policy committee meeting before one of the next two board meetings. We're going to try and just get some ideas at the meeting.
And we're going to try to talk at MSBA, because I, what I got from MSBA, from Kathy Miller, is just some smattering of things from other states, but it's not really going to help us, so we have to.
And I know people want to know that we're moving on that, so I just thought I'd say, I think our plan is to try and have an official meeting and try to have some draft language sooner rather than later.
But we want to make sure that whatever we're drafting is something that.
Will work.
Will, will work for every situation.
That's good, appreciate that. And now, you're also talking, we talked earlier about the meeting with Caledonia and that other stuff.
I'm still waiting to get some dates, it's, I know Spencer, Spencer Yo is on their board, and also one of our beloved subs, kids love him. So, he and I talked, he was here subbing one day, and he said that he's on that subcommittee, and they were going to be talking about it, I think, tonight.
Well, keep us posted, because I like to get that.
Yeah, I, because I told Spencer we need to get that worked out.
Can we have that listed as an old business item? We don't tend to ever use that section, but can we?
Old business, we typically use more than new business, because old business is, once something has been discussed, then it goes to old business to get acted on.
Okay, but where's the section of stuff that we have that hasn't been acted on that's old, like this?
Oh, like this?
And so we don't forget it, like, where, to me, that's old business, but.
And we don't need to really approve, but we discuss.
It's like a to-do list, and it's still on, not done?
Then we need another section called languishing business.
Languishing.
No, it's the, what do you call that, all the leftover stuff in the project? It was a term for what we're finishing, finishing up all the painting, you know, the chip, whatever the.
Oh, a punch list, it's a punch list.
All right, it's the punch list.
Good idea, I like that.
One of the stuffs that, like, you know, we, like Mimi said, we don't want to forget that we have on there that we need to do.
I would think we could have it in old business, not everything needs to be voted on, it's in old business.
Or discussion.
Or discussion items.
But it's been brought up, and we need to finalize it somewhere, nobody set up a date.
Yeah, yeah. I gave them dates and.
Well, just keep us posted on it.
Yep.
Is there anything else we want to bring up on that part of it? Okay, so do we have any feedback or any, anybody get a chance to sign Kevin's card? Are you settled in now, Josh? Let the fun be in.
Yeah, we were nice tonight.
Very welcome. Welcome aboard.
And January is National School Board Month, so I've got treats, but I left them back in the office, so I'm going to zip to the office and get treats, and it's a, it's a thank you to Gwen, and a thank you to you as a board, because I know that at forty dollars in a way compensates you for the time and the effort that you put into this, so, thank you very much.
What else can you do with such joy and get paid for it? Yeah. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made by Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary. For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming, it's always been a pleasure.